You can do about that, isn't it? Oh, for the love of God. They're not violent creatures. It'll move on.
Oh, I forgot to send you back, didn't I?
Well, he not. No, did you find it on the website?
No, I just got my items, so.
I think I sent one to the fire chief, didn't I? Yeah, well, see, see how you rate, Kyle? I'll add you to my list.
I was on it last time.
I know you were, but you know, when you get to be... I'm not into the swing of it all quite yet. I'm getting there again.
Six thirty. We'll call up a city of mayor, regular city council meeting from Monday, June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two to order. If we can start with the pledge of allegiance, please. All right, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries four zero. We'll open up for public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing no one will close public comments, move to consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in here, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. That will take us to six A one, David Dronan, associate city administrator search.
Good evening, council members, mayor and staff, thank you. It's been a while since I was last here, so the good news to report is that we had a good number of applicants for your city administrative position. We had a total of nineteen applicants for that, which I thought we did very well. Obviously, some of those candidates, you know, were kind of stretching when they applied. They didn't have the background that we were looking for, but we did have a number of good applicants. And so going through that process, since we last talked, what I did is I did take a look at those nineteen candidates. I reviewed them and I elected to move thirteen forward. So there were six candidates that I didn't believe would be qualified for what you're looking for in terms of a city administer. Some of these individuals did not have a background in government. And I felt that that was important for the position of of city administrators. So thirteen candidates were asked to go to the next step of being a semifinalist. Those individuals went and did a video interview as well as a personality assessment. And during that time, we did have two individuals that did not complete the assigned homework by the due date, and so those two dropped out. And then we did have a third candidate who I was quite excited about, who did withdraw his application for personal reasons. I reached out to this individual and really I inquired and asked if there was anything we could do to keep them, keep them in the applicant pool. Unfortunately, this individual said it was personal reasons, didn't disclose, and did continue. So we are now looking at a total of ten applicants. You have received information on those candidates, the video interview, the personality assessment, their resume, and a copy of their cover letter. So what we were going to do here tonight is going to talk about those individuals. We're not going to use names because that's still confidential information. We'll refer to candidates by numbers. And then at the conclusion of tonight's meeting, the names of the individuals who you are inviting in for an interview will become public. And so what our office will do is we'll put together a short bio of each of those finalists, and then we'll provide that to Luanne, and then you as a counselor can direct how that gets shared with the local media and other requests that may come in. So with that said, the first thing that I would like us to do is is to start talking a little bit about the ten candidates and try and kind of weed that down to five to six candidates. You may say, why are we looking at five to six candidates? And typically, we've got a time gap between now and July twentieth. And a lot of these individuals may have applications out for other positions. And for various reasons, individuals may drop out. So that's where, you know, I would hope that we could come or an interview on July twentieth. So what we have found works out very well is to simply go around the table and just, if you would, please indicate the top three or four candidates on your list. I've got a little sheet here. I'll be keeping track of what everybody's preferences are. And then we can certainly identify those that are consistently rated at the top. Those individuals, for sure, we would like to invite in. And then if there are any other individuals, we can have discussion again using numbers and not names. We can talk a little bit further about each candidate. So anybody like to start us off?
You want top three?
Yes, please.
I have two, one, eight.
Okay. I have one, seven, eight. I'm sorry, one, seven, eight, eight, okay. Thank you.
I have two, one, eight, uh, two, one, ten.
Okay.
Peggy's were two, one, nine.
Okay. We've got plenty of time, Larry. No rush. It's a big decision, I know.
Three, two, six.
Okay. Okay, so basically what we're looking at is we had, for candidate number one, we had four votes. For candidate number two, we had four votes. For candidate number three, we had one vote. We did not have any votes for candidates four or five. For candidate six and seven, we had one vote each. For candidate eight, we had three votes. For candidates nine and ten, we had one vote. So I think there's probably agreement that we would invite candidates one, two, and eight for an interview. Is there agreement from the council on that? Those were the candidates who received three or four votes from the group.
Numbers again?
One, two, and eight.
I'm good with those three.
I am also.
Are you looking for a couple more that are... I'm good with those three for sure.
Yes, so that's kind of a starting point to say for sure these three. And then I guess I would invite the council to have discussion about, there were five candidates that received a single vote, so we can have some discussion. I think it would be worthwhile to have more than three candidates.
Right. Five or six?
Correct, yes.
I know nine was on there once. I had nine as my fourth.
Do we just want to go around the table? And do you want to tell me your fourth and your fifth candidate? You may not, I'm not sure if everybody has those numbers. I know.
No.
I asked for just the top three.
The numbers are on the tops of those resumes.
No, I know, I only picked three.
Yeah.
Mine are six and nine.
I'd be open to bringing in nine.
And nine. I'm hearing some support for candidate number nine.
You got three of us so far.
Okay. Okay. So that brings us up to four. The other candidates that received a vote are three, six, seven, and ten.
I'm fine with ten also.
I would be good with ten. That was my third choice.
Are you good with ten?
Yeah.
All right, let's try to get one more.
Six.
Did you say number six?
No, I'm just saying six candidates you're saying.
If the council does want, you can go with five, six. It's really up to you. Like I said, some of these candidates have other applications out there. And it's a period of time before we actually do the interviews.
Then it would be...
I like six.
Like number six?
I would be okay with six. There's a little struggle on the videos, I thought, but it might just...
Right.
What about...
Terms of it and it just...
I don't want to...
It seemed a little... It seemed a struggle with a lot of the questions, but it just might have been because of what it was, so I'm okay. I'm okay as a six, to bring six.
What about seven?
I didn't... I wasn't interested in seven.
I, I wasn't either, but I would be okay with it for the same reasons.
Yep.
Maybe, should we just, can we, can we do both?
I think that's going to be a little much.
We don't want too many either. We don't want too many either.
It gets to be a long day because you're basically, and this is yet to be determined, but typically what we do is the council spends an hour with each candidate. And then at the end of that time period, then you sit down and deliberate and have discussions about and make your choice. So it does kind of get to be a long day.
I mean, I, I like five, but can you have like an alternate if one drops out in between now and then?
Sure, and that's exactly how I would explain it to them is that, you know, it's just a limited number, you know, as we get closer to that date. Because some, for a lot of candidates, you know, they've applied, they've done the video interview, the assessment. Some of them, it doesn't really become real until they have to take time to come in for an interview. And some people do, you know, further evaluate it and say, you know what, now is just not a good time. You know, so within a few days of me calling and notifying them, typically I do hear back from individuals if they're not going to proceed.
Closer experienced, what we're looking for, an educational background.
That's exactly where I stand on those two also, is based on experience and education.
Six has no management experience.
Did you get numbers?
I do.
Did you?
Yeah.
Put your, okay.
No, I didn't put mine in.
Oh, you didn't.
I said two, eight, and one, which were your top three. I was just quiet. I had ten questionable, no, and five questionable as maybes.
I'd be okay with six.
Five, I thought was... Yeah.
Wasn't sure about five. I questioned that.
I'd be okay with six.
Six as an alternate?
So would you do an alternate? Is that okay to do?
Or not?
I mean, do you call them up and say, hey, if someone drops here in, save the date? Is that even...
Yeah, yeah.
Is that typical, common?
You know, I, I have done that before with some other ones. You know, I, I've had some interesting recruitments recently where, you know, we've had six individuals and within a week of individuals being notified, three of them dropped out. So, you know, and what I stress to the candidates is that it doesn't really matter how you get in there and get an interview. What matters is how you perform once you're on the top. But, you know, it's...
I'm just looking at time constraints and just the amount of information to try to manage six candidates. I was really comfortable at five. That's just me personally.
The right number then, maybe five is...
No, and of course, kind of struggling to get that sixth one, is it really... Because, I mean, we can always kind of go back to that pool if all of a sudden you only have three and two drop out, right? I mean, it's not like you can't reach out to them again to say that we'd like to move you forward, right?
Yes, true. I mean, you know, and, and you're exactly right. I could, you know, we've got six selected here. I could just mention to the sixth one, you know, you're very close. We, you know, if anything changes, I'll be in touch with you, you know, if possible. And if you're willing, please keep that July twentieth date open. And then obviously, you know, as we get closer, I'll certainly...
The other thing is, once he calls these five, maybe one of these five are going to drop out. And then number six will just, that'll be the last call he'll probably make.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
And then, then you've got your five candidates. That's, it just gives him flexibility to be able to, to get five candidates in.
I would say number six would be the alternate, number six. And if you call the five and all five get, then I would say we're, six is out. Six is in if one of the five say, no, I'm withdrawing.
So are you saying you'd like to have a decision tonight? Or should I tell number six that, you know, if I reach out to all five of them and they say, wonderful, I'm excited, I'm interested, and then I get a call in, say, a week from now, and someone says, you know, I've been thinking more about it? Should I tell candidate number six that you're still a possibility?
Can you tell them nothing for two weeks?
Well, they know the schedule, they're probably looking for...
Yeah.
They probably want to know where we're at.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, if, if not watching tonight even.
Right.
I, I guess I'll look to you to see what's, if it's common and seems right to, to let six know that as an alternate, and if someone, you know, things may change, if you can wordsmith that good with that candidate, I'm okay with that. And give you, and we'll, and once we make the motion, we'll make the motion, give you that flexibility to add that one in if someone does drop out, so you can just do it.
Yeah, no, that sounds great. That sounds great.
Does that seem fair? I mean, I, I don't want to disrespect any of the candidates either.
Right.
Yeah, no, and, no, and I don't think you are by any means. I think you're, you're saying that, you know, it's up to the candidates that we have, and we selected these five. However, should one drop off, we would be willing to sit down and talk with you. And you, you may be surprised. I mean, you know, some candidates may, in a video interview, like you were saying, be accustomed to talking into a computer and not having a person to communicate with. And so they may not initially appear well, but when you get them into an interview, there may be a whole different side of them, and their knowledge of local government just really comes out. So, yeah, I don't think you can, you know...
All right.
Offend anybody by...
Seems okay with that, then I'll look for a motion.
How many do we have right now?
We have five, one, two, eight, nine, and ten. Is that correct, Pat?
Yes.
One, two, eight, nine, ten, and six as an alternate.
Okay.
All right, I'll look for a motion then to move forward with candidates one, two, eight, nine, and ten with number six as an alternate.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion?
I thought we had got some really nice candidates. With the different backgrounds, experience, so I'm excited to bring them in.
A lot of different backgrounds, yes.
So the, the next step, I'll, I'll contact them tonight. I'll contact that sixth candidate and let them know that we'd like them to, you know, be ready and prepared if that opportunity presents itself. But...
One minute. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero, yes.
Sorry.
Go on.
So the next step then will be to reach out to the candidates and ask them to send me their references, provide me with the release so that we can look into their background, do, do a credit check. We'll also have them do kind of a mental aptitude, which will look into their logic and their reasoning. And then, you know, that additional information will be provided to you when they come in for their interviews on July twentieth. So that information will be provided a week ahead of time so that you can, you can go through that information, and that'll help fine tune kind of where you're standing on ranks. And then also, they'll have the opportunity to talk with them and ask questions. I will send out a list of questions that we typically use that, you know, the council can tweak and, and change, revise, and we'll go from there. So the next item that I'd like to talk about is just what you have envisioned for that interview day. You know, there's a lot of different options. Some of those options include having staff sit down with the candidates. Typically, the council does an hour interview. Typically with staff, it's about a half an hour interview that they have with each candidate. Again, questions can be crafted by the staff, maybe specific to their areas of expertise. And then what they do is they provide input to you as the council. They'll just complete a form, they'll, they'll give some insights, make some comments about what they maybe liked or disliked about certain candidates, and then that will be made available to you prior to your deliberations. The one thing I will remind people is that the council will have more confidential information. The staff will be provided with a copy of the resume and the cover letter so that they have the general background of the candidates, but not the more detailed confidential information. And it is ultimately the council that makes the decision. They certainly can benefit from having some insight from the staff, and that's kind of the intended purpose is to, you know, give staff some ownership in this decision. It's a big decision for the, for the city, and maybe have some technical expertise, asking questions of these candidates.
Okay, so for the July twentieth, what, I mean, what time are we thinking these, like, council interviews would start, just so that everybody can plan accordingly with their day job?
So typically, it's a full day. Typically, the staff will meet with the candidates in the morning, and then simultaneously, maybe around eleven o'clock, ten to eleven o'clock is when the council starts meeting with candidates. So... Is that going to pose a problem?
Shift that either.
I remember what we did.
Are you going to have staff meet with it?
With the candidates.
I think we did last time.
Yeah.
We're so small, I think it's important that...
I think so. So these, I guess, five, if, if everyone wants to do it, I would say we have all staff. The fire chief.
Because see then, and then when did we do, I really liked that little meet and greet thing. When was that? Was that like not on this day?
You know, I'm, I'm...
I don't remember what we did.
It was the same day.
Everything was the same.
Yeah, I thought we had staff, staff met, and then we kind of met over lunch and kind of had a box lunch or... Excuse me. Box lunches, and then they just went around and met with some members from the community. I think it was, I think it worked well. And then council, and then council did in the afternoon.
Yep.
So council, council interview would start like at one o'clock?
Well, council, if we're going hour, you said, so we're going six, five hours.
Yeah, so I would...
We need three hours for the first, for staff. So there we got eight hours.
Yeah, so what we would do is we would probably run them concurrently with one another. We'd have, you know, some individuals who come in and, and maybe their first meeting is with the council, but then later in the day, they meet with staff. But the staff would start out earlier in the morning, and then the council would kind of start a little bit later and would probably go into the evening with deliberations and discussion.
I mean, does it have to be an hour long? I mean, if you get what you need from the candidate, I mean...
No, and the next one's prepare, you know...
Right.
Is there, but I'm almost thinking an hour might be on the long, I think a half hour's too short for council an hour. Probably, I'm guessing it's going to be more in the forty-five minute range, but...
It gives you a little bit of time between each candidate, too.
Yeah.
To think about them, to make your notes.
Right.
To, to, you know, just to kind of digest what, what they've said.
Forty-five minutes, and then we have fifteen minutes in between where we could write our notes. Because we decide that night, don't we?
Correct, that's... I am working with the city, which is doing it on two separate nights and not starting until later in the evening, until four o'clock. I mean, whatever best suits you is the, is the council and staff that works best, so...
Well, staff we can do in the morning for sure.
Right.
It's not a concern if, if that works for Andy's schedule, if he wants to partake in it. I think he has a little flexibility, but... And do we want to do the community thing again? Do we want to reach out to community members or some of our, you know, engineering's, our engineer or, or our attorney, if they wanted to be there or...
Just for instance, what happens, like, say, I can't get off work?
We'll do years later in the day then.
Okay, that's a long day for those candidates.
We can't, we can't do years later in the day. I see what you're saying.
Because the council, full council interview.
Correct, and, and it's an open, open meeting.
So maybe, do you want to do it over two days? So maybe, do you want to do it over two days? Do the 20th and the 21st and do few candidates? Like start at four o'clock. The only problem with that, I think, is you forget about the first ones you interviewed. When you have that break like that, that's why you kind of want to do them all in one day.
We could do.
What time is, Chad, what time do you get off?
Uh, I have a lunch break and then I work till four.
What about if we did, invited the community to do a meet and greet after four? And at least Chad would get to meet everybody with whoever we invite, don't invite, would like all of our committees that we have and whoever else shows up that would like to meet the potential candidates. At least Chad would say, if he, if he does miss, he would at least get to ask them questions. We'll still be here.
I guess how I see the day playing out, correct me if I'm wrong, is at 10 o'clock in the morning, the candidates would come and start meeting with staff and then do a lunch meet and greet like you did at like noon to one. One o'clock would be the first interview for the city council until 6:00 PM would be your last interview because five hours, so you'll be done by seven. And at seven o'clock, you can do your deliberations, make your decision, and you're done, done. To keep it all in one day, you want us, if you want to split.
I think one day is best.
Yeah, but if you want to split it up, then you have to start at four o'clock for part and four for the next. And in, you know, that's what you're gonna have to do. But I guess I would, that's how I would see it playing out if. And, and I don't know, Pat, you, you've done it more than I have.
You know, uh, things have changed with the whole COVID.
Right.
So there hasn't necessarily been the meet and greets happening as of recently, but, uh, you know, it's certainly an option. I think some of the things that we've had other communities do is, you know, they'll have the candidates hop on a bus and they'll just, you know, drive around the community and point out different assets that the community has. Uh, they'll make a presentation, you know, maybe, you know, water department talks about their beautiful shop and, you know, what's going on there. Or the fire department talks about their new station, you know, something like that, just to kind of give the candidates a sense of what they're getting into. But, um, the meet and greet, you certainly, it's something that they can do. I don't know if you were thinking that candidates or the residents that would come to the meet and greet would then fill out a form and share input with you on the candidates. You could always.
I know we talked, we just had a discussion after, I believe, on it. I can't remember. We might not have time for the meet and greet based on, based on this, that staffs can need two and a half hours. We're gonna need five. We should have some sort of a meal there if we're catching something, you know, give them a little break. But I like the idea of drive, going around the community for an hour versus.
Well, I don't think you need an hour.
No, well, if they go into, some of them, Kyle goes through some of the wastewater treatment.
Oh.
And how detailed and, you know, we get it, but by the time you get into, in, in, into the new fire station, show them that, then get back on the bus, then get to the next, probably get.
So we'd have to run to bus? No, so how you could do it is you could just, if staff meet with them, I mean, I'd like to be part of the council interview process where I'd like to be, but I'd like to also be part of the staff, so I'm gonna have to make me do. But if you have the staff do the meetings at 10 o'clock until say one, because you're doing a half an hour, you have Kyle and Janelle driving around the community. We'd figure out something, or one of them, because they'd be, want to do an interview, when that person is done with the interview, then they get in with Kyle in the city truck and Kyle takes them around the community, explains things. That's all he's gotta do. And then you're, you're done. Or Janelle, or whoever you want to have do it.
Right.
I don't know, can you drive a diesel?
Oh, of course.
And I can go along, I could be part of that too.
But you'll be doing interviews. So as you're doing your interviews at one o'clock and the person that's done it one, at, by two, then Kyle would take them around the community.
Oh, one at a time.
One at a time. I've done it one at a time before. Or do it, they could do it before the interview too. So they would like at 12:30 or whatever, he could take them and then they do their interview at one o'clock. He'd bring them back here for the interview.
Or, or we have scheduled, you know, from 12:30 to 1:30 kind of a lunch break type thing, uh, you know, where they do everybody, you know, so you don't have basically staff time being taken up, given a bunch of individuals. There is a benefit to having the group. That way they all hear the same thing.
Yep, that's true. Would Mayor Lutheran High have a van that they might let us use?
They might. I mean, one of the schools, we should be able to get a, a small bus.
Right.
Can we just use a rescue?
Fire truck.
Fire truck, right.
Put the fire chief in charge.
Well, that, we can figure that out. If that's what we want to do, we can figure out how we're gonna get them around. But we, we should be able to get a small bus or we could even contact Maryland.
Get a tractor with a wagon.
Community and we can let the community members know.
Maybe I'll come back with a duck truck.
Oh, Lord.
It's a whole mayor experience right there.
Yeah.
Well, you're thinking you want to do, city staff will do interviews from like 10 to noon, let's say.
Thirty of.
Or 12:30. And then from 12:30 to one, they can have lunch. You want to give them lunch? And then at one o'clock, we'd give them a tour of the community before their interview? Because then if, so from one to 1:30, they do the tour and then you'd start the official interviews at 1:30 with the candidates. Right.
Is it better to start an hour earlier?
Like nine o'clock was.
Do an hour earlier, then do a tour, have lunch and then start with us.
Yeah, it gets to be a long day and so I, I kind of hate to push it too far back just because, uh, you've heard a lot of.
Like myself by myself with them?
No, it would be a group.
As a group.
It would be a group, yeah.
And how much time would you, I had mentioned a half hour. It doesn't have to be a half an hour. It could be longer. It can be less.
Yeah, it can be smaller.
Yeah.
Fifteen, twenty minutes?
Questions, okay.
Couple of questions, okay?
Yeah, I feel like what staff would provide, we could figure out within that amount of time.
So 20.
Twenty minutes?
Twenty minutes.
Okay. And I think I heard the council 45 minutes, but then obviously there'd be a 15-minute gap in there for, in case somebody runs over. One of the things that we will be doing is I'll be in the meeting with the council and I'll know the questions. We'll have them pre-written. We'll be sticking to the script so everybody gets the same opportunity to respond. But then if they fall behind, I'll say, okay, we've got 10 minutes left and we have, you know, eight questions remaining. One of the important things is that we want to allow them time at the end to ask questions of you. Uh, that shows how much research they might have done, um, into the city of mayor and so.
Forty-five or an hour. I, I'm guessing most candidates will stay here, right? So if we get done early, we can always pull the next one in early. I, I'm assuming they're gonna be onsite, most of them?
Correct, yeah. I would assume that most of them will come in and if we could kind of set up a waiting area.
They'll set up stuff.
Make sure we have, you know, some snacks and refreshments.
Yeah.
If they're staying so that they can, yeah.
Wifi a little, yeah, we can do all that.
Are we gonna serve, do lunch? Do you want to do lunch?
Yes.
I think we should.
Okay.
Box lunch or something or.
Okay.
We'll have to figure out where, where we want to get it from or cater it in from agave or something.
Okay.
They kind of like agave, just.
Yeah.
A local, a local restaurant.
We'll use that. We'll do that. Yep.
When you do talk to the candidate, we ask if there's any diet needs, uh, restrictions that we need to be aware of.
Good idea. So then that means staff will meet with them at 10. We'll be done by noon at 20 minutes each, if we do that. Is that what you're thinking? 20 minutes?
I was thinking we'd go earlier.
Nine to 11 then.
And then it will be done and then we could do a tour, a lunch, and then we can start at one.
Okay.
Or council.
So starting, start at nine o'clock with staff, be done by 11, then do the tour at 11? Is that what you're thinking? And then lunch?
Yeah, unless, I mean, unless we want to do the tour right away and we get them here and do the tour right away and.
That's up to you. I'm just trying to get some order.
Well, maybe the tour right away because then if they have questions about the city, they can ask them in the interview.
So maybe a tour at nine.
Okay.
That shouldn't take more than an hour, right?
The one thing I will just mention is that some candidates may have a, um, for the drive-in, you need to submit to look and see where all of our candidates are coming from. You know, sometimes it is nice to, to not start out with a tour because a lot of individuals have to arrive at nine o'clock. If I know of some individuals who have a longer commute, uh, I will push their interview back further so that they have time to get here. And I'm just looking now to see.
Lunch or lunch?
Yeah, I mean, I would recommend if we could do a lunch tour, it just.
Okay.
Gives a little flexibility for.
I'm good with that, yeah.
Okay, so that would be at 11 o'clock? Is that when the tour would be?
That's.
Yeah.
What I was suggesting, yeah.
Okay. And then at noon would be lunch? Okay.
Start interviews at 12:30? That first candidate's only gonna get a half an hour for lunch. The rest of them can have, you know, an hour and a half. That's gonna be the difference.
True, it's the first one.
Yeah. Brush your teeth and no food left, yeah.
That what you want to do?
I think that's a, a good schedule. Others, thoughts on that?
That's fine.
And what I will do, I'll put together a tentative schedule and share it with, uh, with the council as well as, you lose any, uh, candidates or anything like that. We can always tweak it and modify it, but, uh, we'll stick kind of with that general schedule that you've outlined here.
So now that we've approved, uh, the candidates, it's now public going forward, correct?
Correct, yep.
Speak about some specifics about some candidates?
Just about the candidates who are being invited in for the interview.
Let me make sure.
And so I'm just going to go through here and just identify where those candidates are, are coming from.
That's why I'm asking.
Okay, yes, we're thinking along the same lines then.
There is, is number nine one of our candidates?
Yes.
So I think number nine's out of state.
Correct.
Is that, do we do a webex or how does that, how do we, how does that handle? Do we zoom for that candidate or is that expectation?
Certainly can't, the one thing that I always tell councils is, would you be comfortable hiring somebody that you don't see face to face?
I'd rather.
You know, it, you know, if, if you're willing to allow them to do a remote interview, just, I guess, have to ask that question.
I would prefer face to face, but I just didn't know how that worked. The trap, that's just on them to get here. Okay. Fair enough, good.
And, and in some cases, uh, cities do offer a reimbursement for expenses. You know, if people are flying, they have lodging, uh, but that's entirely up to the council. Uh, there's no right or wrong in that situation.
Okay, so we'll discuss that further at a, sometime when we want to.
It would be nice if we could maybe have that discussion now and, and make that determination because that will probably be a question from some candidates when I, and it may impact their decision as to whether or not they want to interview.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good on the schedule, right?
Correct, yep.
Everyone is comfortable with the schedule?
Mm-hmm.
As far as we know now?
It was basically, uh, morning staff will interview. Uh, there will be a tour of some sorts. I don't know if we've nailed that down, if it's gonna be the fire hall and the water.
Yeah, we'll nail, we'll nail, we'll nail down the route.
And staff will work with the council. Staff will work with the council on what we think it should be.
Okay.
And get your input on it too. Maybe next council meeting, we can, we'll, we'll come up with something and we'll present you with what we think should be and then we'll go from there and you can tell us if a yay or nay it.
If we need a quick work session.
Okay. Okay. Okay with that? Okay.
Besides, you just drive by or does it go into every, each facility, whichever, but, um, we'll nail that down.
So that'll be from 11 to 12, then at 12 we'll have lunch, a box lunch.
We'll get lunch, yeah.
And then at 12:30, the council will start their interviews and then there'll be a deliberation. Once those are completed, the input from staff will be provided to the council in advance of that deliberation and a decision will be made. Um, that evening, a decision will be made as to who, uh, the council would like to be the finalist. And it'll be basically an authorization for myself to work with, uh, if there's a negotiating committee or with the mayor, whoever the council decides, uh, to kind of set the parameters and then start negotiating with the, the selected finalist.
And if they have more than one finalist, say there's two that they decide they like, they can always call those two back in again for another interview, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So if you have two that you end up, or, you know, a couple of people that you think, oh, gosh, I don't know which one, you can call them back in for another interview, if you choose to do that. That's a choice you can do.
Candidate number one, who interviews at 12:30, will have to stick around to the very end?
No, you do, you'd probably do it on another day.
Bring it back a different day.
A different day, yeah, a different day, yeah.
Yeah, we get to the point where we just can't.
Or there's two that you really like and you want to just bring them back in because you gotta try to decide, yeah.
Okay.
You can do that at another date.
So as council, we would be doing like pack a lunch or a dinner because.
How about we.
I might be, I don't want to get hungry.
Yeah, we'll get food at 6:30. Okay, yeah, and then you can just, and then you can.
Just need to make sure I eat.
You probably want to take a break. You probably want to take a break after you do.
Yeah. No, what I'm saying, I, I wanna. No, I just want to make sure because I would be very hungry if I hadn't eaten anything since 12:30 and I want to make good decisions, not on an empty stomach.
We don't want you making decisions on an empty stomach. We'll be sure that you have something.
I was like, if I pack a dinner.
Just as a scenario, if I can't make all the interviews, do I pick my, like, top two that I want to speak to?
Why don't you wait and see if you can make it or can't make it? Try to make it.
I just got a response. There's two people gone. I can't make it.
You want to do a different date?
No, not if it works for everybody else and they've set it aside.
No, I mean, we've had this.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Could I, you know, just do the top two?
Make it the next day? Just do it the 21st or the 19th? Do it the same week?
They're gone the whole week.
Oh, you can't?
No.
Okay.
We'll have to talk about that, but to figure out how.
Yeah, we've had the.
I mean, you're gonna.
Cause I could, I could squeeze one in at the 12:30 and then I could squeeze two more in after work, but I'm not gonna be able to interview two people.
Would you join, could you get off for two and a half hours and join staff?
I can join staff. Start, well, I could join staff at 11, 11 o'clock.
Could you call in sick?
No, who's gonna, who's gonna open? There's already two people gone.
Whoops, that's where we. Do I have to come down there?
Yeah, right.
We can start mail.
That'll all be done by the time the interviews are.
Yeah, I suppose you're gonna have to.
Couldn't they do a group interview? Just do them all at one time?
No.
Uh, we haven't done a group interview. Uh, I don't know how that would work with.
He's, he asks them one question each.
But that wouldn't be very, but that's not very fair because then, no.
That's weird.
We try and be uniform and consistent with.
Right.
All the, so everybody has an equal opportunity. Uh, to respond to questions and it.
Maybe I could meet with individual council members as they come out of the interviews and get their ideas and work off of that.
You're gonna have to rely maybe on the city council.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying is if I speak to each one individually as they come out of the meetings with the individuals and maybe get a really good idea of their thoughts and feelings.
Is it, yeah, is it videoed? Is it streamed?
No, they're private.
I don't think you do interviews. Well, I don't know, as a finalist. Some people have done, some communities have done it. I know they have.
We'll just have to.
Figure it out.
We'll talk about it.
Yep.
As it gets closer, I guess, we'll figure out how we want to handle it, but.
Cause I don't, I mean, unless I'd get a co, council consensus or opinions, I don't know that I'd feel comfortable voting on a candidate if they haven't done the interviews.
Right, right. And then you might have to rely on, I don't know, on other council members.
Right. It's, it's, it's a catch 22. It's.
Yeah. Yeah, then out of town for some traveling.
Yep, so we've got, uh, you know, one individual coming from. Yep, so we've got, you know, one individual coming from Wichita, Kansas.
Which is what, eight hour drive?
So.
A little bit more now.
About, okay.
Ten, twelve.
Five hundred miles?
But we don't know if this, if this candidate would be flying or driving. We don't know.
Yeah, I do not know. And we don't know if he'd accept either, if, except the phone call and, you know, except the interview even yet.
Person should be here. I don't think they would have applied having known they didn't have to be here. I think if we asked, if we went through it and needed this candidate to come back, that I can see the city picking up, but initially.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
I think they need two hotel, two, two hotels, two nights. I would be willing to maybe pick up a night of one of the hotels or maybe the hotel and they pay for the gap, maybe the hotels.
I would say for the initial interview, every candidate has to get their, on their own expense and if we do what Luanne was talking about, we can't decide between two and that, then we would, if they have to come back for a second interview, we would consider reimbursing expenses.
That sounds fair.
See what they say. If they come back, something different, let us know and we'll discuss it.
Okay, yeah, no, that's.
Is that, is that typical?
Uh.
I'm kind of looking to you for a little of that guidance.
Yeah, you know, some do reimburse, you know, they, thinking of some of the recent ones. I mean, they do specifically send them to certain, you know, lodging accommodations, but this is for, you know, you've got, yeah, you've got an individual coming from Marshall, from Fairfax, from Kokato, Burnsville and St. Cloud and then just one individual from Wichita, so, you know, most of them are within the state here and.
I'm really only concerned with the one from Wichita.
Yeah, so, so I think you're being reasonable. I don't think there's any prescribed standard to what you should or should not do.
I'll see what he says. Yeah, let's see, let's see what the candidate. Okay. Anything more you need?
Just if there are any questions or anything I can answer now as we kind of jump into the, the next phase and working towards the July twentieth interviews. Any questions that staff or anybody has for me? Process.
I just had one and when we, when I initially met with you, like, one of the requirements that was on top of my list were all the candidates willing to relocate to mayor.
And.
desired in mayor.
That's not a question that we're allowed to, we can't require unless, for instance, it was an emergency personnel who had a certain response time that was expected. We're not allowed to require them to indicate residency, I mean.
It's deemed to be unconstitutional. You can't do it, it's discrimination. Because if you, you, the person can't afford to live here or they have, how, why, you can't make people move to a community. You can't make them do that. It's just not, it's, it was, it's, in fact, I think there's laws. I think it's been taken to court and been found unconstitutional by communities because they used to do that and they don't do it anymore at all.
The one thing that the city could do, I believe, is the city can offer a moving allowance, relocation allowance and then it could be if relocating to the city of mayor. You could do that, but.
I almost think it's part of they don't live in the city.
It, you know, and I didn't ever live in the city, but I had the community was, was the top, my top priority.
Right.
I mean, so just because you don't live here doesn't mean that you don't have ethics and morals and, and you do what's right for the community. Sometimes it's easier not to live in the community than to live in the community because I lived in a community I worked in and people would say, how come you parked your cars like that? Your shades are up, you're this, you're that. You were under a microscope that I really didn't care to be under, so, and it's small, right? Yeah.
Job either.
No.
So you try to go have dinner and people are stopping to talk to you and, and.
Like, we go for a walk on the street. Go to the park, yeah. Right, right.
Answer your.
Not really, but. I have a different philosophy than what was mentioned, but that's all right.
I'm assuming our one candidate would.
Yeah.
If he would.
The one probably.
Would have to relocate someplace.
Yeah. Anything more for Pat?
Nope. Okay, thanks much for your time and, yeah, I'll be sure to keep in touch with you if we have any that withdraw or if I hear anything unexpected. I'll try and figure out my natural disaster of a day to.
I'm looking kind of sick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Interview in.
The resumes need to go back down to Luanne. Everyone has them on email.
We can, we can, we can use them for staff. Have them to look at.
Yeah, I think there's no.
Staff can have them to look at. I don't have to recreate. Once I get, once we get the okay from Pat. All right.
With that, let's move to six eight two, approval, approval of resolution six twenty-seven, twenty-two dash nineteen.
Mr. Mayor and council members, Planning Commission met on June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two to review the current plans for the proposed picnic shelter and restrooms for Old Schoolhouse Park. Planning Commission is recommending approval of the site plan. Park and Recreation Commission met on June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two to review the current plans for the proposed picnic shelter and restrooms for Old Schoolhouse Park and the Park and Rec Commission is also recommending approval of the site plan. Attaches the resolution six twenty-seven, twenty-two dash nineteen approving the site plan for the new picnic shelter and restrooms in Old Schoolhouse Park. Staff's asking for approval.
Any questions for Luanne on that? I'll look for a motion to approve the site plan for the new picnic shelter and restrooms for Old Schoolhouse Park, resolution six dash twenty-seven dash twenty-two twenty-two dash nineteen.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
Mr. Mayor, council members, now with the approval of the site plan for the picnic shelter and park shelter and restrooms for Old Schoolhouse Park, staff is recommending that city council authorize bidding of the park shelter and restrooms with a due date and time of two P M. Tuesday, July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Council would award bids at the city council meeting on Monday, July twenty-fifth and the proposed completion date of May first, twenty-twenty-three. So staff is asking for authorization to bid.
All right, any questions for Luanne? I'll look for a motion to authorize to advertise for bids for the park shelter and restrooms, Old Schoolhouse Park.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. I'll take six B one, approval to apply for rural fire grant project.
Andy.
Mr. Mayor, council, fire department is looking to apply for a grant through the D N R for a purchase of some dual certified wildland gear. It would be, with dual certified, it would be good for grass fires and stuff like that. Also, we could use it on car accidents and other things like that where we would not be, you know, need to wear our structural gear, so it is a lot lighter gear and stuff. So in calls where it's, it's hot out and stuff like that, where we don't need our, our structural gear, we'd be able to use this and stuff. So the amount we'd be looking for is twenty-eight sets at five, five hundred ninety-nine dollars and eleven cents each, totaling sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and eight cents. So we'd like to apply for a grant through the D N R for that. The D N R grant, D N R grants statistically, when we have gotten it, depending on what we've applied, you'll, you'll usually get a few thousand dollars or something like that for it.
With the D N R grants, there's usually a city match, city, city match, and that's ten percent. So the city's portion of this would be one thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars if the grant is awarded to the city. And, and again, like the fire chief said, the city's been pretty successful in getting these grants also. So we're looking for approval to be able to apply for it.
Great. Any questions for the chief? And I'll look for a motion to authorize the chief to file for the grant for sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven, sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? So Andy, will all these, do we have to start maybe looking at different, start looking at what that?
I believe with this, I think it's still with what we've got will be feasible.
You don't think it'll be too crowded?
It'll be a little bit, I think we maybe have to get a couple other just hangers for inside of our lockers.
Okay, okay. Start looking at, if you think we're going to need to start expanding those, let's try to get ahead of that and start planning for that if, if we think that the grant will come through. But thank you for, for finding that and applying for it. Any other discussion? I'm sorry, I thought I had one more. Oh, just one little, if you could go back, you're missing an R on one of the mayors. One more page.
Here?
Yep, right there.
He's missing an R, okay.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
Just pray there, just pray really light on the copy.
And thank you, Andy, and that'll take us to Public Works, want to approve a replacement of air conditioner units.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, got a few items tonight. First off is a motion approving the installation of two rooftop units at the mayor community center. There's the big two units up on top of the gymnasium. Over the past few weeks, city staff has been receiving quotes on the installation of two new R T U's at the mayor community center. Over the past couple of years, the units have become very unreliable resulting in increased service costs and downtime during community center events. The units were installed in two thousand and four, reached their projected life expectancies. Currently, the units are blowing fuses and service techs are kind of stumped as to why this keeps happening. Things are just getting worn out, tougher to turn, that type of thing. Staff has proposed to have Owens Company Incorporated to replace the two rooftop units in the amount of fifty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars. The units will be more efficient and also more reliable. I believe there's actually a energy grant to those with them. So as far as funding, we spent a lot of our community center funds up until late because of the remodel and everything. We do have ten thousand dollars currently in capital outlay and we also have money in the four thirty-five fund that we could use to purchase these units. Then Luanne can help me out on it. If we budget, budget money for them this year to replenish that fund so these units won't fail on us during events and that sort of thing. So let's go ahead and get it taken care of as our recommendation.
Right. So back in March or April, you did a transfer of funds and closed the community center at capital outlay fund. In that was forty-six thousand some odd dollars. Of that forty-six thousand dollars, what's been spent now has been the asbestos removal, the new floor and the carpeting. It's going to probably take up most of that forty-six. I was thinking that we had forty-six, but we don't. So the only thing that's left is really the ten thousand in the twenty-twenty-two budget and then there is money in the four thirty-five fund. If you looked on the back of my, which I can go back to, on the back of my staff report, I've provided you with the fund balances so that you could see those fund balances from every month. And there is four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, there's probably only four hundred and forty, four hundred and ten thousand in there, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand in there now, one thirty-three. I was thinking of something else. So you would have the money to pay for the units and then just budget for them for next year and put the money back into the four thirty-five fund is what Kyle and I had talked about. I mean, because they are heating units too, they are heating and air conditioning, so it's not like, you know. Right.
And there has been past community center money in capital outlay that hasn't been spent.
Right.
We had fifteen thousand dollars in capital outlay.
Right, and I could probably do an audit. There's probably more money in that four thirty-five fund that came from the community center capital outlay that was transferred in or whatever too, but yeah, money that hasn't been spent.
Can't have pipes freezened, who knows what.
Well, you can't have, not have heat in the building if you have an event.
It is more cost effective, or both units are the same age and it's cost effective because they do got to run to crane.
So, and I, and I agree with that. I mean, I think we have to do it because this is a community, people are using it as a community building. I think maybe in the future we could try to bunch it, but for that, I mean, over the last couple of years, it's been unreliable. So we've known this has been going on, I think.
Mainly started last summer, right? You know, it was, bunch it had started, but, so we thought we'd get a little further, but then.
I think we need to do it. I think we need to do it just because of the building.
So in five years, you'll have fifty thousand, you'll have enough to do something, right? Which I, you know, and you may want to consider then reopening that capital outlay, community center capital outlay fund so it doesn't get thrown into the four thirty-five fund and nobody knows what the money's for. I don't know, you'll have to decide. That'll have to be a decision that maybe you and your new administrator has a better idea of how to keep track of it, but it's, you know, then, then you know exactly what, what you have by the fund, so, yeah.
That was the four thirty-five, wasn't it?
Yes.
All right, any questions for Kyle? Now, I'll look for a motion to approve Owens Company bid in the amount of thirty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars to replace two of the units coming out of the five hundred.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
On the request for city council, it says meeting date of May twenty-seventh. Should that be June twenty-second?
Of course. We're just seeing if you guys read your packets. Just seeing if you read the packets.
Both of them.
Well, of course.
Thanks for calling me out. At least you didn't use the laser pointer.
I just wanted to make sure.
We have the mini split system at the wastewater treatment facility.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, over the past few weeks, city staff has received quotes on the installation of a new mini split system for the office building at the mayor wastewater treatment facility. The electrical room currently has a single mini split two-ton system and the office area is currently has a wall air conditioning unit. The two-ton unit from the original unit from two thousand and four, it's no longer operational. They no longer make the parts, so it's completely obsolete. And the unit is needed to keep V F D's in the main control room cool from overheating. The main control panel is also in that space as well. Updating the unit to a three-ton system will do a better job at keeping the room cool in the hot summer months. Currently, the two-ton system does struggle to keep up. The office area, like I said, is currently has a, just a through-the-wall air conditioner unit, which the units are, as of later, just garbage. They just don't seem to last. We've had a lot of trouble with them. So we are also proposing to put a mini split in the office as well. They are much more efficient than the window units and more reliable, have a longer life expectancy, easier to maintain because you actually can maintain them and fix them and work on them and more efficient overall as well. So total cost to do all this work is twelve thousand, seven hundred and it is in the capital budgeted for, for this year because we knew it was going to be needed and there's seventy thousand in capital outlay for the wastewater treatment facility.
Any questions for Kyle? Now, I'll look for a motion to approve Owen, Owens Company's bid to, for twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars to upgrade the wastewater facility mini split installation unit.
Motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second from council member help. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. And the Seventh Street Northeast Road repairs.
All right, over the past couple of years, the road conditions along Seventh Street Northeast have significantly deteriorated due to the pore base under the patriminus or the last, this past spring, frost significantly worsened the road conditions resulting in much needed reconstructing the, also the other two areas closer to the east of the, closer to the roundabout. Staff is proposing to have three sections of Seventh Street Northeast excavated down about a foot, filled in with eight inches of class five, compacted class five, followed by four inches of patriminus and two separate lifts. That'll make a nice strong road that'll hopefully last much longer than it did. This will help correct the issue and give the city longer life expectancy out of the roadway. Staff is proposing to have W. Mueller and Sons conduct the work in the amount of sixty thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and we have money for this. And we have money for this, um, in the roads capital outlay, we'll get split between that, and it'll also get split between the street improvement fund.
How much was there in roads capital outlay?
Thirty-six thousand.
So we're gonna be short a little bit though. Remember you and I talked about that? Because there's only two forty-four left in the street improvement fund. We thought it was two.
Correct.
Well, two forty, two forty-four, five fifty-eight, but the twenty-twelve street, um, projects are two twelve of that, two forty-four. Right?
Well, I thought it was two oh eight.
Well, even at two-ten, the difference, that's thirty-four, and then where's the others?
Well, we got, we, we have also fifteen thousand in road driven repairs for, uh, streets, so that remainder can come from there pretty easily.
So that's, that gets us to forty-nine, Kyle. I thought we talked about this, that we were short, you and I, when we talked. And help me remember. Because that only gets us to forty-nine thousand of the sixty, so we're like ten short.
There's two forty-four in street improvement right now.
Right. So two-ten off of two forty-four is thirty-four, right?
Let's get two, so two forty-four minus the two-ten.
Right.
That gives us the thirty-four.
Right.
We got thirty-six thousand in roads.
Okay.
Capital outlay.
Oh, okay. So that gets us to the sixty. Yeah, okay. I didn't.
A little over the sixty.
I, I don't know if we didn't talk about the roads capital outlay. I don't remember having that discussion, but we probably, I probably.
I got my notes.
Well, no, I believe you. I'm, I'm questioning me. I'm not questioning you. I just wanted to be sure that.
On top of that, we still got a cushion in streets repaired.
Okay, yep, okay. Okay, I just, I just thought we were short for somehow that. I had that in my mind, but.
I think we'll be all right.
Yeah, I think so. Okay, yep. And this is gonna be kind of like a change order because they're the ones doing the, um, milling overlay in town. So it's, it's giving us a better deal than two because they're already here. So we're, it's, it's actually less money now by having them do it when they're in the city than if we did it next year. If we put it off for a year, it's gonna be, it's gonna be more, just because they'll have to mobilize and come to town.
What happens in the areas in between where we're digging down, putting a new base a foot, what's happened?
So currently the areas are soon, eh, yeah, I mean, there's potential. I mean, it, currently those areas are still intact and are fine, but it, it could, and hopefully the worst areas have shown themselves, and once we correct the worst, the bad areas, hopefully, in a perfect world, that's it.
We'll push something somewhere else or do something.
And once they activate down, they'll get rid of, because, I mean, this was a gravel road before, right? So it, frost boils and everything come out of gravel roads. So they got clay boils underneath and we just covered it up with Poteminas when we put it down. So now this, they're gonna dig down a little bit, pack in some decent gravel, then lay blacktop on top of that. Should the, it should correct the issue.
You don't think there's a need just to put a Band-Aid on it right now and then look at doing the entire road by digging? I mean, we think.
Regrading the whole road.
Engineering standpoint, have we looked at that?
Long-term, yes, that'd probably be the way to do it. Um. Yes, if we just did and fix these issues and Band-Aid them, I mean, it'll be another five years. It'll be as bad as it were, if not sooner. And we have been kind of Band-Aiding the area for this to the west. For a while now, so it's kind of the, the point. I mean. In the long run, yeah, it'd be better just to dig up the whole street and redo the whole street, but how cost effective?
Doing, doing all, you know, digging down a foot and redoing the whole base, it seems like we should be looking at.
Cause yeah, it'll just be.
Just doing it all, but.
It'll just be patches and patches and patches until it, and eventually it'll get the whole road.
So it's, I, I assume it's mainly water that's doing that frame freezing and thawing and freezing and thawing, right?
Yep, it's pushing up.
If we fix the one section, does that mean that water that would have been there is now pushed to the sections? We're not doing it, that, that's gonna get worse now. It, it, will it change anything under there that we don't? I guess we don't know, we don't know.
You don't know what you don't know exactly. It'll correct the issue in the, the current area, but is there potentially like a move to another area? Sure, but it's the base. So right now it's showing that we got a good base under a good amount of the road, but these areas, it doesn't have good base, so. Unless we were to install a tile line and the blanket and the fabric and all that stuff like we did when we did re, street reconstructions, which is probably what is needed and what, you know.
I'm just struggling with doing this big of a, this big of a, and just in sections, it just, I'm worried about it.
I mean, we could just remove the blacktop and then, but it, it'll be like that again.
Next year.
Next year. It could potentially be next year. Yep.
I think we just have to have a bigger discussion, but I think this needs to be addressed now and.
Have you been in the area?
Can hold this off for five years and we got another s- street project, may, you know, and if it's bad again, maybe we can tie it in with that. And, you know, just redo the whole street at that.
Experimenter and see what happens.
Right.
The other thing is that the city engineer is coming in, we're gonna have a work session after the next council meeting because he can't be at the second one, he has to be at the first one. We've had requests again on Sixty-Second Street to annex one of the lots in, they want to be hooked to our sewer and water. So then you're gonna be doing a street project on that little section of land that's not in the city anyway, which abuts this. Do you do it all at once and do it next year? You know, that, that's the, and I don't know, how soon does William Mueller and Sons need an answer?
They're here tomorrow.
Yeah. So just to put that on your radar too, that that's been a request again that to hook up sewer to that empty lot. And so I don't know what.
I mean, we can have them just, you know.
Think we can get five years?
Who knows?
I, I mean, I know it's on, on, you, you can't honestly tell me.
It will keep the price lower if we just replace the blacktop.
Right.
We dig up the blacktop, just lay to the thickness side, I'm not sure what the thickness is over there right now, three inches, three and a half.
But if we have a wet spring next year, then it could just be the, it could ruin the new, new tar and you're right back in the same place and you're probably paying, you probably pay thirty thousand dollars just to put tar down, right?
Right, if redo that whole road, we're talking like three, four times a Simone.
Right.
At least.
Fix these three spots.
Sure. Yeah.
And hold it off a few years.
And it, yeah, even, I mean, this is just the bait, and we're not laying, you know, like, if we did the street, we could dug down like a foot, two feet, laid fabric, rock, 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 compact, 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 and then.
And I'm not saying we're wasting money, but we've done a really, really good job on all our roads, maintaining them. And we have one road that's kind of this mismatch of things that we might not be making the best.
I mean, a good majority.
Does that make sense? Like, most of our roads we are on top of.
And plan would be if once this, if this is good, and it survives next spring, this is being scheduled, it just gets chip sealed right away next year too, which would hopefully.
Yeah, but I think you bring up a good point with that other road. If that came, got annexed in with doing that, then we'd have, might as well just do it all at once.
But we're still.
But I mean, if you could wait to make, if you could wait to, wait to make your decision after the eleventh, but I'm, I'm not sure we can because Mueller and Sons are coming to town. I didn't know they were coming that soon. I'm just thinking then you could have had, had that, you know, have that discussion and that's what.
I'm not sure if they'll be starting there, but if that was part of the quote, they want to do this work while they're in town.
Right.
Thing is, we're gonna have other street projects.
How, how old is this current road?
True.
Uh, when was the roundabout put in? Twenty fifteen, this year I got married, so twenty fifteen.
But that road was done sooner than that. Part of that road was done with the fieldstone.
At the, the end.
Yes.
Or, or here, Larry, that was done with fieldstones put in. So that has made it. So there might be actually, I don't know, fairly decent base, it may just be the blacktop. You know, you don't know, we don't know until we dig it up.
Right, because we, they graded it and they tarred it. That's all they did. They didn't, they didn't do any.
I remember when they did the roundabout, they graded it and tarred it, and I talked to the Muhlers and they said it was soft when they were tarring it, so.
The fieldstone wa, the fieldstone where they added that, I'm talking about. They just, they, there wasn't much dirt work done on that, under that tar before that tar was put down.
Right.
But it stayed.
Right. Long-term goal or hopeful goal is this solves the issue, and then in a couple of years, or, you know, ten years down the road, when you do a two-inch milling overlay, you just mill this whole road down an inch, two inches, then you put a nice coat of. On top.
Yeah, just do that right now. All right, any other questions for Kyle? And I'll look for a motion to approve, uh, Mueller and Sons to, uh, fix row for sixty thousand, five hundred. I'm sorry, uh, six thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries three one. So with that, we'll go to council reports.
Council member did at the meeting tonight about the planning commission and the.
Perfect. Council member help.
Nothing to report on.
Council member McNeely.
No, just have EDA tomorrow.
Get back together. It's been a while.
Yep.
And I have nothing to report on, so with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Second.
A motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. We are adjourned. If we will. Uh, unless someone needs a break quick, we will jump right into the work session.
Um. Do you have, do you want agenda? Yeah, 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 I'll get you one. I gotta do that.
Thanks, Pat.
On your computer.
I like to make notes.
Hey, I'm sorry, Nikki. Are you hungry?
No. No.
What time are you leaving tomorrow?
All right, let's.
Yep. They did, they did, yep. They even, even by your house there, that was a discussion, the developer was so nifty. He, why, actually, we wanted that road wider.
Yeah.
He didn't want it.
No.
No, it all be, I forget, that was when it was R. Holmes. I forget the name of that guy. He was a smooth talker. But yeah, he, uh, they, they didn't widen the ditches or slope the ditches nice. I wish the ditches were a little better. What's that?
Oh, yeah.
What he bought that lamp for?
Yep, yep. Yep, yep.
All right, with that, we will call the workshop meeting to order, and we can start with, uh, Mayor Wetland Project.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one item to the agenda?
Sure.
I would like to add, um, uh, I've been, it was, uh, approached by Hollywood Township to buy some of the sheriff's time. I just would like to get some direction from you on that before I bring the contract to the council for approval and before we do our twenty-twenty-three budget.
All right, we will add that after the public works expansion. All right, Mayor Wetland Project.
What do you want up, Mark?
So. Yeah, I don't know what, Mark, what you're gonna want up there. So we invited Mark, um, to come talk today, kind of give us an overview of the project, uh, for some of the newer council members and some of the o- older ones who have been here. Just kind of what happens now, where we're finished the project, what does this mean, the banking of credits, and how do we do it? And how do we, so you could just kind of give us a little overview of what's next. Maybe a little history, if you want to go through some of the bullet points, that's fine.
Yeah, if you're interested in history, I can, um, blow through it pretty quickly.
Brief.
Sue much you're most interested in is what do we have now, what's at worth?
Mainly, yeah, right.
Nope.
It's been a long project. We, we, we've completed it, it's certified with the state, now what?
Right, right, right. Um, and I'm not sure what everyone's background on this project is. We started it in twenty-twelve. Uh, wetland delineation was completed, the project location is shown there. Uh, it was an existing wetland and, uh, Bo, uh, Bolton Lake did a delineation on it. There's the wetlands that were there at the time we started the project. This was part of a larger project that the city was looking at as a stormwater plan. And so, you know, we thought, well, is there a way to address the city's stormwater needs? And at the same time, uh, maybe gain some additional revenue through the wetland banking program. And the wetland banking program is a, a, a program through the state and federal government where wetlands are created or restored, credit is generated. And then if somebody fills a wetland somewhere else, they can come in and purchase some of that credit from the city. And, um, and that's what they use as their mitigation or their replacement. So anyway, that's the delineation. If you want to just kind of keep scrolling through. Uh, so here is the original kind of overview plan. There was an existing wetland. There's drain tile through there, coming from the east, coming from the southeast, coming under, uh, those, uh, existing tile had to be incapacitated and a outlet structure at the north end had to be installed. The idea was that, uh, two ways to get this credit, it was already a wetland, but partially drained, so the hydrology was gonna be restored, holding water in there, and the vegetation was going to be upgraded to a native wetland plant community. And that's how the, uh, the credit would be generated. Parts of the application, there was a conservation easement that was required. Uh, the project included some city land, and then to the east it included, um, a portion of it was owned by a private individual, I think Joel Finkamare. And, uh, that land, I think, had to be a, an easement acquired from him, and then he also became a participant in the project. If you wanna just keep scrolling, um, the way these credits are identified is that the wetland plant communities that are there in the deeper areas, what we call a shallow marsh, the browner fringe around it is a wet prairie, and then there's, uh, the pinkish is a, an upland buffer. And all of those generate different amounts of credits, and so we have to identify them and monitor. Another part of the project is after the wetland is restored, we have to monitor it for five years or maybe more. Uh, this figure shows the, uh, the monitoring plan, which the, the blue were photo reference points, so we can visually document what's happening. The red squares show, uh, sample plots where we go in and do an intensive monitoring of the vegetation. And then the green, we had to install, uh, what I call data loggers, or they're shallow monitoring wells, so we can document the depth of the water levels and whether or not the required water levels have been restored. So that's the monitoring, part of the monitoring plan.
Five years from now, or has that already begun?
Five years from when the project, restoration project starts. So we're on year five.
Okay.
Yep, okay. Uh, here's the notice of decision approving at the city. As the, uh, local governmental unit for the Wetland Conservation Act made the decision that this project was worthy and qualified for a certain number of credits. The council, uh, made the decision, and this resolution, the document before is called the notice of decision. That's the formal approval, uh, for the project under the Minnesota Wetland Conservation Act. Um, and then there's also a federal, uh, program that would also have to approve the project and the credits. The Army Corps of Engineers oversees that. Uh, that's what this one is. There's a document called the mitigation banking instrument, and that has to be all signed off on and approved. The table here shows total project area in the bottom, twenty-one point two acres. Projected credits, eight point eight eight, three, three credits. Uh, the ribbons is their monitoring, credit monitoring. And then fifteen percent of the credits, the reason they show that is to get the fifteen, you can get the fifteen percent credits right away. Uh, with number one, if you look underneath the table, there's an approval of the as-built plan, showing it's been approved, constructed according to approval. There's vegetation has been established, and the conservation has been record, easement has been recorded. This is where we are right now. Got about, I think, one point four credits in, in the bank that had been approved and deposited. Um, there's a little, just so you can see kind of what our monitoring project looks like, we do, again, for five years. You can scroll through it. These are a couple of the figures we include. Here's what it looks like after it's restored. The hydrology is now more typical of a, what we call a shallow marsh. Um, and then we document the, um, water levels and the extent of inundation, bottom left kind of, uh, what it was in, in twenty-twenty. And then these are, again, the plant communities that we monitor, and we document the plant species that are there and the percent of natives, and that's required to prove that the project is successful. This is the, um, state's dashboard. I included that on your, um, and you'll get the handout. And it's, the website is there if you're curious, but, uh, if you go down to, um, uh, we're in, across the top, Bank Service Area Seven, Major Watershed, South Fort Crow, Carver County, City's Account seventeen sixty-three. Uh, my name is on there as the account manager. Uh, the amount of credits that are currently in the bank are, um, point five three seven six of shallow marsh, point eight seven two four of wet prairie. Um, so again, you got any questions, let me know, I'm.
Wetlands people tend to speak wetland.
Wetlands people tend to speak wetland language.
We should have, get more credits.
So, right, so the, the 15% is what you get when it has been constructed according to plan and so on. Then with monitoring, you achieve what are called performance standards and based on the achievement of those performance standards and additional credits get deposited in the bank. And so that's. Up to 8.88, right.
How long does that take, how long the process is?
Well, we're in a little bit of a, kind of an unusual situation in that in order to do the vegetation management, we had to maintain it at a drier level than it will be in its permanent form. And so the conversation is, we're having with the regulators is how much credit can we get? Now, the permanent outlet structure was just implemented this year. So are we gonna have to monitor it another year or two to get more of those credits? The vegetation, the plant community has developed very successfully, we're really happy with that. But we've got to see what the water looks like now that we're, you know, using the permanent outlet structure. There's very specific performance standards that have to be achieved to get the credits. And you have to document that they have been accomplished, otherwise, you know, you may have to monitor more or you know, do some corrections. But anyway, that's, this is the final potential 88, 8.8833. If you want to flip, I don't want to totally bore you, but just so you have some idea, these are the, the release of credits, the bottom kind of tells you what you need to do to get those credits. 15% with the as-built, another 20% after hydrology has been met for two or more consecutive growing seasons. 20 additional credits for interim vegetation performance standards. 15 additional credits for interim vegetation performance standards have been met, another 15, so anyway, it just kind of goes there. Maybe it could all be achieved in one or two years, if everything works well, I think the vegetation is there, we just have to get them to agree with the hydrology aspect of it.
I did email this to you, Mark did send this over to me, I'd asked him for it last week and then he was out of the office, so he couldn't get it to us before, so he did send it off to me today, so it is been emailed to you. So you do have it.
Okay. And so, and so then after the performance standard has been achieved, then the next form, you have to apply to deposit the credits, this is a transaction form to deposit the credits. Provide all the information, submit it to the state, and then if everything checks out, then they put those credits in the bank. And then people can buy them, right? And so these next forms, then, and now here the city's sitting on their credits. And the way this works is the state maintains that website that I showed you before. Somebody that's looking for wetland credits can go to the website, can see what's available, say, okay, the city's got, city mayor's got some credits that would work for our project. Let's check with them and see how much money they want for their credits. It's all, the city decides how much they want to ask.
We just set that price.
You set that price and, you know, it's kind of a little bit of a game, you want to get as much as you can, but you want to sell. And so, you know, we, we are very involved on the private side in doing lots of wetland projects. So we kind of know about, you know, where the credits are being sold and how much they're being sold for.
We tap into you at that point then?
I'd be, I mean, I'm on the, I'm on the list right now as the, you know, contact person for the city, I think that would be, that'd be valuable for you to have that insight. We do probably more wetland banking projects or wetland permitting projects than anybody, so I think we really are on top of what they're selling for right now. So then somebody comes in and they say, okay, city, we want to buy your credits. This is a sample of a purchase agreement that the state has provided and says, I want to buy this many credits of this type. There's some additional fees that go along with that, that typically are paid by the buyer. There's an easement stewardship fee, there's a withdrawal fee, kind of do all the math on that, and then there's the grand total. And then, okay, so then this is the, the purchase agreement and then there is one more form. After this is a credit withdrawal form and then somebody, after they enter into the purchase agreements, they get approval for a fill permit somewhere, they come back to the city. And they get the local governmental unit in the area that they're doing their permit to sign off on it. And then they go, if you go to the next form, they come back to the city, they give you your money. And then the city signs and says, city as the account holder signs it and says, we've been paid and we have the credits.
Some of these credits are sold in fractions too.
Yeah, they're sold in square feet.
It is.
Actually, they're sold in .4 places after the decimal, so .4437, that's, that's the way that they bet. Typical prices that we're seeing now, you know, it's gonna be about $3 a square foot or $140,000 per acre of credits. So it's, you know, compared to what it was at the time this project started, granted, it was many years ago, so that's part of what's happened. But there's, there's just more of a demand, both the state and federal government have really pushed to go to bank credits as replacement as opposed to people constructing their own wetlands on their project site. They just, that just doesn't work as well, so there's been a lot more demand. And it's just a real struggle for the banking program to keep up with the demand, so, you know, prices go up. So, yeah, three, three dollars, I don't know what the highest is, it may be $3.40 per square foot, again, pushing $150,000 an acre. That would more likely be in Hennepin County. You know, there's, kind of depends on where you are, but still, there's no reason, I don't, I don't think that the city shouldn't be able to get, you know, close to $3 a square foot or $130,000 per acre for their credits.
130,000, and how many acres?
Well, it'll be about nine. Yeah.
One reason why we did, we did invest in this project, because it cost us money to do the project. And then we also paid Vinkumare already for his portion, correct?
Right.
So I remember when we approved this, we knew that we would get money for these credits to make, to give us that money back on what we already spent. I remember somebody had already approached us to like pre-buy them at a discount and we had said no at the time.
Right.
I remember the county, we wanted the county, I think, to give us 30,000 an acre for them at the time, and the county didn't want to even give us 30 as we were constructing and just so that we had some cash upfront to be able to pay for some of the costs, well, look what it's, what we're gonna get now instead. Oh my goodness. It was like, I remember that, I just do, and I, I might be wrong, but I, I'm pretty sure my memory's pretty good.
I thought they approached us with this lower number.
With 30,000 an acre, but they were actually worth more than that at that time too, but they just kind of lowballed us on it and then, because we approached them and said, if we construct these, hoping that we could sell them to get some cash so that we didn't have to upfront all the money for the project. And we knew we weren't gonna make any money on it, but we were gonna break even. That's what, that was our goal, it was part of our stormwater plan, so. So I think you're gonna do more than break even on it, obviously.
Yeah, and just, you know, at the risk of stating obvious, you get nine credits, you know, you don't usually sell nine credits in one chunk, right? So you may sell a half an acre and then a third of an acre and then the economy slows down and then you sit on the credits for a while. We did a, we had a bank project we did in Hollywood that, that was probably 20 credits and they sat for a long time. And he started out, I think he was getting 50 cents and we just wrapped up the end of his credits last year and I think he got like $2.80. So, you know, it just really went up, the prices really went up. So, but I, but I think, you know, I think you should do well, we still have to get it worked out with the Army Corps of Engineers, they, they have not signed off on it yet. And credits are a lot more valuable when the state program and the federal program both have accepted, approved the credits for a deposit. So if you, you know, the table that I showed earlier, it says credits approved, state, yes, but, but not the federal government. So Kyle, who's monitoring and kind of handling this project for the company. Just met with the Army Corps of Engineers, I think, last week on Wednesday, that table there, go, go.
Down, the one I understand?
Yeah, go back down, stop. So program approval, that column, so some are safe, fed and state approved, under the mayor's bank, it just says state approved. We wanted to, you know, they wanted to hold off on the deposit until the federal government approved, I said, let's just get them there so we know. And as people are looking, they'll check in with the city and see, and maybe somebody just needs state-approved credits, they don't need the federal approval. And so then, you know, you'd be able to sell them to those people, but it just kind of gets you on the board, so as people are looking around, they know mayor, the mayor bank is.
Going forward.
That's what we're really pushing for right now is to get the corps to approve some portion, so it'll say state and federal, I think we'll at least get the 15%. And, you know, we'll have to work with them on the issue of the outlet structure and how much monitoring they're gonna require before they'll give us more of the credit. But I.
I hope there's a way, Luanne, since you're here, to like kind of put a little bit of a history together for our new city administrator, just so that, this is one of those projects that's been working for a long time. And our goal was not necessarily to make money, but to at least recoup what we invested and we knew this was gonna take time. And solve our water problems, so it was like kind of a unique situation, but I think it might be.
This packet might be good for that person.
Right, they might have a lot of, yeah.
But like go back and like, what did we pay for that project? I don't know if we can, I mean, I'm pretty sure, dig it up. And, you know, like what we just paid Vinkumare. It, it would just be nice for me even to see.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it wasn't, it wasn't a, you know, cheap project, not just a matter of plugging the water and letting it, you know, getting your credits.
We would probably get our money back.
Yeah, yeah, I think it was something in the neighborhood of $100,000 for the vegetation management part of it.
Right.
You know?
Because we had to pay for that company to.
Prairie restoration and they monitored, they did it for five, they worked on it for five years.
And then you have Mark and you have all the engineering and you have, you know, yeah, you, you probably are into it for AF.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everything will just show, I mean, we needed to spend the money on the infrastructure. So it's not like it was a waste, but then now we can get some of that money back.
Right.
By selling these credits, but it would just be nice to see it in one kind of like picture.
Let me see what I can do, I mean, you got better, you got a better, a better return on your investment than you would have on a CD with your money, that's for sure.
Well, I think the original plan was, let's go to that wetland and just dig it down and, and use that to gain the additional storage. But that wouldn't, that wouldn't, yeah, that wouldn't generate any wetland credits. So the idea was, well, you, you're not gonna have a deep hole, you're gonna spread it out over 20 acres, but then you can get the wetland credits. And that, that was kind of a win, I think, a win-win.
I think it looks like, I mean.
Yeah, I do, and we have annual monitoring reports that we have to submit and the vegetation has developed really well. And we've been really happy with that, because they had to spend a couple of years to try to kill off all the nasty stuff that was in there. But it just takes work to, you know, to get these things where you, where they need to be to generate all the credits that you want to try to get out of them. So.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
So with that, this is very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
For myself, who's been involved since the beginning, I appreciate you coming in.
Yeah.
That way at least have an understanding where we're going and what's next.
Yep.
So when they all get deposited, let's say in two years, at most, and they're, do we try to go out and try to market it at all? Or do we just let it sit there and people will come to that website and they'll contact us? That's typically.
That's it, we, we've never had to go out and look for people to buy the credits. Every once in a while, Bowser, the state will go out with a RFP and they'll want to buy a large amount of credits at one time. But then, you know, they're not gonna pay what you would be getting if you were selling them to private developers, right? You know, coming from Chanhassen or whatever.
We can pick and choose what we want.
Yep, 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 right, set your price, yeah.
That's good, and that'll be helpful, Nikki, to what you're saying, want to get an idea of where we're at financially and how well, what do we want, what do we think we want to get for, for them too?
Well, and I think, yeah, and I think that's a conversation maybe that, you know, the council ought to think about a little bit as to how to handle this. Because somebody comes in, they want to buy some credits. It wouldn't work very well to have to wait to go to the council and say, all right, you know, somebody wants to buy the credits, how much money do you want for your credits? You know, I think there should be like some set price with some, you know, margin, plus or minus that staff can make a decision on. And we can provide, you know, input on what the credit prices are doing right now. And I think that would be a, a better way to handle.
Yeah.
I mean, the credits are available right now, if somebody came in and asked for them. So it'd probably be something to think about sooner rather than later, just so that.
Yeah.
No, there's no missed opportunities.
Or maybe you do a wetlands committee of two council members that could meet and give them the power to make the, and make the decision about the, the offer, the price for the project. Is that, I don't know if you want, as a staff person, if you want to be making that decision, I don't know, maybe the next person would, I don't know if I would want to do that.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's based on the amount too.
But you set a minimum and you set a minimum this year and they don't sell for two years, then have you updated the minimum?
Yeah.
Or maybe it becomes something of the, on the fee schedule.
But I like the idea of.
A committee. Yeah.
For me, it might change by how much they're buying too.
Right.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Versus a quarter acre, it might be, you know, maybe a little cheaper to get rid of.
That's very common.
A bigger amount, so.
I, I kind of like the idea, I like the city council being involved in the decision, it's your project and I do, and I get where you want to kind of be able to do it quicker, but yet sometimes government just can't.
Sure. Appreciate that, we, we do, the city of Blaine has a wetland bank. And we buy, you know, credits from them, but it is a frustration because they, they have an environmental committee that has to approve, has to authorize the sale and the price. And sometimes that takes a while. So, you know, people that are out shopping for credits, they want to get an answer, they want to get a purchase agreement signed up and they want to submit their, you know, applications, so.
I just think this project is something that would be kind of a top pass on to that, the new administrator to make sure they understand it fully.
For sure.
Especially since we have a fairly new council too, that they were part of the decision process. And, you know, not that it can't change, but there was logic to the money spent.
Okay. I appreciate, it really helps.
Thank you. Good to see you again.
Thank you, nice to see you.
Thank you for everything on the entire project.
You're welcome. All right.
Thanks. Hi, Mark.
Public Works Expansion.
So Kyle and I were talking about, we know the city council wants to do an expansion on the Public Works Building, we'd like to be able to start the dialogue with the architect or at least bring that back to city council and get your approval to be able to at least start looking at maybe drawing some plans and beginning that expansion. And, and again, then we can also be, start budgeting for next year if it's something you're gonna do, so we know. So that's kind of what we're looking for, is just, is it okay if we put it on the council agenda, ask to hire in an architect and we'll, we'll work with Eric. Yep. Yep, on the expansion, so we'll have him put something together for a contract for next council meeting and.
Fine with that, starting to get that together, we've gone over a lot of it. Talking about this for a couple of years now, I'm, I'm fine with moving forward.
We started budgeting already, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two years now we have.
I don't know, I don't know off the top of my head, Kyle might know.
Yeah. Lynn and I were trying to find where that. So we for sure have.
We're, we're lucking.
We're on a roll.
What was that?
We can get a wall.
No, we have been budgeting, in other words.
Yeah.
But yeah, this is kind of the first step we wanted to kind of. Yeah, I'm fine.
You want to know if we can bring a contract forward with Eric and begin the process?
Make sure we're set, and I think we are, just based on what we've gone over in Public Works and looking through it, I just don't want to have to revisit and reach, you know, redo it. So, but I think we have a good idea of what you need, so I'm fine with that.
Okay, well, that'll be on the next council agenda then.
Sounds good, Sheriff's Contract.
Yeah, this, I, and again, I have the Sheriff's Contract for 2023 and it's something that we do for budgeting where we put it within the, the budget. But I was approached today by a member of the Hollywood Township called me and they're looking to buy just a couple hours a week or an hour a week or two or 14 hours a, a year from a local community. They approached, they approached the Sheriff's Department and undoubtedly the Sheriff's Department doesn't want to encourage them to reach out to the communities around them and see if someone was willing to give up some of their hours. So I would have to address that through the contract, if that's something you want, you think you want to do, I need to put it, I'll put it on the next council agenda for action. If you don't even think you want to even share any hours, then I won't even bring it up. But I just want to know if it's something you want to discuss at a council meeting.
Where, where is the, where is Hollywood Township?
It's adjacent to us here.
I'm perfectly.
I'm good with it.
An hour or two a month or, or even an hour a week.
Okay.
A small amount, I would be okay with.
Okay.
You know, find out if they're talking the remainder of this year or starting next year and all that stuff, but I don't have a problem.
It sucks, because if it's adjacent to us.
They're still around.
They're still around and.
They're still around and, yeah. Or they have instances where they need a sheriff's deputy to be called. And then I suppose they have to pay the higher rate. So, if they contract, then they don't have to. And they can get, they can get some sheriff's department coverage.
Because the sheriff's department can only do it if it's a felony.
Or something, yeah.
Yeah, so they
Right. I will try and get him to nail him down on the hours and what he wants. And then I'll come back to you and get you to approve. Yep. And for what, if it's for this year or next year?
Right.
And then, yeah, we'll go forward from there. Okay. I'll bring it back to the next council meeting, man.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. With that, we are adjourned.